Here.
Mrs. Krasania?
Here.
Mr. Murbach?
Here.
Mrs. Taliani? Mr. Ferrari? Mr. Sarver?
Here. All the purpose of this budget hearing is to provide the public with the opportunity to ask questions or comment on proposed fiscal year 2026 LP District Budget and fiscal year 2026 LP ACC Budget. Does any from, anyone from the public wish to comment or have any questions? Again, does anyone from the public like to comment or have any questions? Hearing no questions, ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Sarver.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Like to call the order, regular board meeting for Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pacetto?
Here.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Here.
Mrs. Krasania?
Here.
Mr. Murbach?
Here.
Mrs. Taliani? Mr. Ferrari? Mr. Sarver?
Here. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone. Beautiful weather we have outside. Hope it stays away till May. At this time, I'd like the members of the board look at the minutes from the regular meeting on August 20th, 2025. There are no corrections or additions. I need a motion for approval.
Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Under recognitions and comments from visitors, tonight for our Division Spotlight, we have Mrs. Gladys Ramey, Division Chair for Fine Arts and World Language Division, to tell us about what's going on in her division. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I'm presenting the Illinois State Seal of Bileiteracy. We have been using this program to give the students who have reached a high level of proficiency in two languages. We started this in 2016 and once the Illinois State Board of Education accepted it and passed it along so that we can, okay, thanks, so that we can implement it in our schools, we went ahead and started it up. Now, what is it? For those of you who don't know, it is just to recognize those students who have received the highest proficiency in either one language or two, or actually two languages or more than two languages. One of them has to be English, the other one has to be a different language. This recognition is really important for those students who have learned a language, a second language, because it is accepted in the universities and the community colleges. The students can actually get some credit for it. Okay? How do they acquire this Seal of Bileiteracy? Well, the students have to have reached the highest proficiency in English. They can show this through the ACT test scores, access tests, and the AP Language and Composition for the English language. For the other languages, we can use the AP Language and Culture Test. The student has to receive a four or five score, or they can take the Apple exam, which they have to reach the intermediate high or advanced low, which is really, really high. Once they receive that, the students can receive a seal, which is the Illinois State Seal of Bileiteracy, on their transcripts and their diplomas to show that they have earned this. Okay? And what's the purpose for this? We believe that languages are very important out in the world, in the community and also the workplace. The students who receive this are able to use this second language to continue furthering their education, their communication with the community where they live. It is also used to provide employers the ability to see if they have learned these skills or have these skills to be able to work in the workplace using a second language. It is also provided for the universities so that they can decide what applicants to accept. Why would we need this? Well, it provides the students study abroad opportunities. There are many universities who do provide this, and it is also helpful for the students have this language to be able to go into different countries and be able to study there. They can receive the university credit and even community college credit. The AP Language only allows it for the university. The seal has the ability to be used also in the community college. And then, of course, pay differentials in the workplace. At the moment, we have at least three graduates who have been using the language in their workplace. Two of them are lawyers, one of them has just, well, actually, he finished his Harvard Medical School about two years ago, and I believe he has finished his intern in the medical field. All right. So, according to the Illinois statute that we have here, each public community college and public university in this state shall establish criteria to translate a state seal of bili literacy into course credit based on foreign language course equivalencies identified by the community colleges or universities faculty and staff. And upon request from an enrolled student, the community college or university shall award foreign language course credit to a student who has received a state seal of bili literacy. Students enrolled in a public community college or public university who have received a state seal of bili literacy must request a course credit for their seal within three academic years after graduating from high school. So everybody is required, the public schools are required to accept the state seal of bili literacy. Okay. All right. So LP Seal of Bileiteracy. Since 2016, LP has awarded the Seal of Bileiteracy to those students who have demonstrated proficiency in English and a second language. We have had so many students who have come through here who have earned the state seal of bili literacy. Our very first year, we had three students, Edgar, Elusez, and Yvette. And then, of course, after that, our numbers have grown. Of course, during COVID year, we did have a slow reduction in number of students. But then after that, we have started increasing our numbers. And this is the number of students who have received all a state seal of bili literacy. And then this is our past year. We have had a significant number of students who have received the state seal of bili literacy. I think it is very important to recognize that the student, we do have very talented students here who have learned more than one language. And not just Spanish. We have also had students who have received it through the German program, too. Any questions? No? If you are interested, I do have, for those of you who don't know, our universities and community colleges do have to provide the credit for them. And each university and community college has a particular different, let me see, credits that they offer. We do have IBCC here, but it doesn't state how many hours that they received.
If I could just, if I could just comment, too, they offer a compliment and kudos to Gladys and her department members. What we appreciate about you and your staff members is the seriousness that you take with the students with the Seal of Bileiteracy. I mean, I really equate this to the level of success that we also see in our Advanced Placement results as well. I mean, it's because we have a group of teachers that believe in kids and communicate that on a daily basis with the kids. And so I know I'm speaking on behalf of the administration on our appreciation for what you do. And I will say Gladys throws a great party at the end of the year. Sue Johnson, our former department chair, she's been working for several years now. And Mrs. Johnson, if you remember her, she donates t-shirts as a recognition for the students as well. So you actually can see the t-shirts they're wearing there. I think what's really cool thing is that that's early in the morning, it's during, I think, it's like near final, near the end, near the end of the semester.
Yes.
What I love, though, is that it's very much like when kids get awarded their National Honors or the LP Honor Society ribbons, the kids wear those shirts with pride throughout the day. It's a wonderful thing to see.
Yes. Sue does a fantastic job. She provides the food and the t-shirts, and then, of course, we provide the area to celebrate them. We've invited all of the parents. And it's always during their, when they come back for their rehearsal for graduation.
That's what it is.
So it's a nice little, kind of send-off for them.
That's awesome. That's great.
All right. Well, that's it.
Thanks, John.
Oh, boy.
Uh, there was no public comment this evening? Six, one. Are there any motions of approval for the bills and payroll for LaSalle County Township High School?
So moved.
Sarver.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. A motion of approval for bills and payroll for LP Area Career Center?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion of approval for the payroll report?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Six point two. Any motion of approval for financial records as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Under correspondence, seven point one, TIF reimbursements, Village of North Utica, the 2024 PB, 2025 TIF second reimbursement distribution of $65,297.12. In the 2024 PB, 2025 TIF two second reimbursement distribution, $14,447.44. City of Oglesby, the first and second installment, $19,655.08 for total reimbursements of $99,399.64. Seven point two. We have a thank you letter from Mrs. Cheryl Pope from the Board of Education for the donation, the LP donation to the LP Foundation in memory of Mr. Ken Matthew and Mr. Henry Joseph Prozinski, father-in-law of Mr. Jason Miller, and father-in-law of Mrs. Catherine Prozinski. And on that note with the foundation, did everyone see the nice donation that was given to the foundation this week? For the Hildebrandts, that was phenomenal. It was very, very nice. It's going to be a great, you know, infusion for our programs to help in the future.
I didn't see it. What was it?
It was an endowment with $161,000.
Exactly.
$161,000 the family donated to the foundation for the distribute programs for LP High School. So that was very nice, very generous and nice of them.
Significant.
Incredible.
Board Committee reports, eight point one, Building and Grounds Committee, Dr. Obleski.
Thank you, Mr. Sarver. Buildings and Grounds Committee met on Monday on September 8th. We had our meeting over in the Dolan Building in the newly remodeled Health Occupations Room, which I thought that was a nice way to be able to showcase that facility. Very appropriate for the Buildings and Grounds Committee, I think, as well to meet there. We provided a number of updates on where we are with our current projects. The Sip and Savor Project is, as it's still a work in progress. And I'm, I think, I'm just waiting right now to actually get their billing to us. So that's what we're waiting to get from them. The Charter Street Courtyard, we are at substantial completion. I know that they had placed the name, the letters for LaSalle Township High School on the the South Marquee, but I know that they were still waiting for the other letters to arrive. I'm not sure if those have been installed or not yet, but they look magnificent. So if you've not had a chance to drive on Fifth Street, please do so to see the, uh, the name of the high school now on the marquee. The roofing project continues to move forward. They're working on the roof of Select Gymnasium. That is on track to be completed on time, which would be in October, so a couple more weeks. Bulk of our meeting was spent on the Ag Building. We have presented to the committee, the, well, I guess I would kind of say called them our final drawings for the Ag Building. Mr. Kamats has done such a great job compiling and assimilating all of the information that he has collected from numerous meetings that we've had, going back to the springtime. And we also received then a price breakout for the building as well. So we're now in a position, I actually wanted to wait until after today's board meeting because there is a motion to let bids for the Ag Building. So that way, we can begin working on a capital campaign to help offset some of the costs for that. Projected cost for the building, and this would include the furniture fixtures and equipment would be right around $7 million. We also had a conversation, too, about the lights in Howard Fellow Stadium. We had a major malfunction right before halftime at our first home game where the bank of the lights in the northeast corner of the stadium just went out. And thankfully, Tim Tommello and Luke Weisen were able to use their skills to be able to turn those back on. We do feel confident that we will be able to get through the remainder of the season. But there is a motion on the agenda to submit a health, life, safety amendments to replace the lights. And that project would be in summer of 2026. And tied to that motion as well would be an application for a school maintenance grant to be able to offset those costs. Do I have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Obleski. Policy Committee, Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes, the Policy Committee met on September 11th. And we discussed the press policies, which were just review, very minimal. There wasn't much to it this time, thankfully. So we were able to recommend that you approve those no changes. Okay? We talked about random drug testing for the policy update. And so we are asking for approval for this drug testing to be added to our policy manual. And we have done it for years with IBCH and St. Margaret's. They are gone. Now it's OSF. It will be an increased cost to us, but we are not just using the breathalyzers and urine samples now. We will do the saliva. So that should make it easier and easier for the nurse to test and on-site and those kind of things.
And that's for extracurricular activities?
It is for extracurricular activities and parking.
Okay.
I was going to get to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So it is proposed that it would be for any extracurricular activity participant and someone who is getting parking, paying for parking, getting parking. So we're recommending that the board approve that tonight. And then there was more discussion about artificial intelligence and a big subject that's going to take a year to address and come to conclusions. A kickoff meeting will be scheduled at the end of the month. So I don't think we have a date yet.
No, you don't. No.
Okay?
No.
So, and that was the end of our meeting, adjourned, and thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Alcorn. Finance Committee, Mr. Murbach?
We also met in the Dolan Building and perused the surroundings. It's very nice, very well done. So it was enjoyable to have the meeting over there and see all those improvements. So we had a lot to talk about at our meeting. We had kind of a long meeting. The first thing that we did was we met with John Vassetti of Bernardi. And we talked about the funding for the Ag Building, basically, and the bond issuance and things of that nature. Well, we want to, we do want to protect our $3 million of working cash fund availability, and we need about $4 million. So John presented us with the idea of issuing debt certificates and as a different way to go about it, which, you know, we talked about it. We, I'm comfortable with it. I understand it. I've actually invested in them. And so that's what we're recommending here tonight. So we did talk about it at length. It's a good plan, and it allows us to get the $4 million without touching anything else. So, so we are recommending that. Then we, we did review the architectural design and plans and things of the Ag Building. It was nice to see how it's going to set on the property, and it's an exciting project. And again, we saw the same list and talked about those things and the potential for getting additional funds donated and things to the construction of the building. And so we also then recommend that the board accept, that we have the recommendation to let bids for the agricultural building as presented in your package tonight. And then we reviewed the fiscal year 2026 tentative budget, our final review. We went through that in detail, looked at a lot of different things, asked a lot of questions, talked about the TORT fund and some other things. And it is our recommendation to approve the final fiscal year 2026 tentative budget as presented. But there are a couple of things that I want to throw it to Mrs. Jen Doze, some things that she has to tell us about with it. So, Jen?
Good evening. Good to see everybody. I was just going to go over the fiscal year 26 budget. I have to read out beginning fund balances. So for Fund 10, we're going to begin the year with $8,108,231. Fund 20, $3,7,496. Fund 30, $809,938. Fund 40, $1,317,306. Fund 50, $905,303. Fund 60, $50,271. Fund 70, $392,651. Fund 80, zero. Fund 90, $6,181,631. Just to kind of go over a few things with the budget to call out. We, for Fund 10, the Education Fund, we recognized $500,000 for the revenue related to the Health Occupation Classroom in fiscal year 25. We are going to have $761,000 of corresponding expense coming out in fiscal year 26 related to that. So it kind of offsets in the two fiscal years. All future donated projects will be ran through Fund 60 to kind of alleviate that crossover. We lost the TEOP grant this year, which was $135,000 in revenue reduction. And then we had $444,000 in extra funds fall off this year in comparison to last year. In Fund 40, our Transportation Fund, we're seeing a 7% increase with our Johannes bus contract. Fund 60 is showing the $7 million for the Ag Building construction. Fund 80, Property Casualty Insurance increased $100,000 over fiscal year 25. We have $100,000 for exterior lighting projects in Fund 80. We also received the $50,000 maintenance grant related to that project, but that was recognized in fiscal year 25. And then in Fund 90, we have $6 million for the health, life, safety projects that we are finishing up from this year and next summer. The additional remainder of the $100,000 for the exterior lights, and then $243,000 for the Dolan and Auto Shop Fire Alarm System. But overall, we will be finishing the year with a projected surplus of around $46,000. So I think for all of the things that were against us, we landed pretty good. So, any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
So then, after that, we talked about the school maintenance grant applications. We did talk about the stadium light replacement, which already has been discussed, and we recommend approval of those. We recommended approval of the track project, which we have a change order, number one, and we recommend approval of that. And then we got updates on all the facility projects that have been going on. We also discussed the random drug testing cost proposal and those items and the changes associated with those, understanding that the policy had to change in order for that change to be made. And then Dr. Obleski updated us that Title I funding is expected to be cut up to 30% next year, right? Not this year.
Right.
So that would result in approximately $82,500 being eliminated from our budget. You know, the good thing for us is that's only 0.2 of the district budget, 0.2% of the district budget. But still, it's another headwind we've got to deal with. So that was our meeting.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Murbach. Administrator Report, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Obleski.
Thank you, Mr. Sarver. A couple of things just to highlight in my report. One, we completed our 2025 audit, and we had our exit interview with Mr. Newkirk. He will be here in October to be able to share his results. Overall, we had, we had a good audit. There were three findings, however, this year. Nothing substantial. There was one that was kind of a mistyped information in one of our, in our school lunch program. We had another error where a student was miscoded as being free as, and which should not have been the case. And then we discovered an issue in how we are recording our expenditures in Title I. Title I is very unique in that we have the extended grant, which actually, this, the current fiscal year for the Title I goes through June or July 31st. It crosses over into the next fiscal year. We just have to reconcile those expenditures in a different way in our financial management system, which is, it's good to know that that's what we need to do differently. But overall, we had, we had a very, very positive audit. The one other thing I wanted to emphasize or to point out is, I included this in my report, and this is really good news. ISBE has realigned the ACT cut scores to where they're really more in alignment now with what the national cut scores have been. So if you recall, and this was the same, same with the SAT, the state of Illinois had a higher cut score standard to meet proficiency than actually what the College Board was recommending. And so, and that's why I think for a lot of high schools that you see, I mean, you look at the test scores, and we always can get better. But that was one of the other hurdles, is that we had a higher standard to make as opposed to other states that were using the SAT, but using what was the recommended cut scores. So we're excited about that and excited to then begin to see what impact that's going to have for our students. And this kind of correlates very well with the work that Mrs. Cushing and Ms. Lance are working on together with the new benchmarking system that we're using. Mrs. Cushing talked about this last, last month. We're actually using the ACT with our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors three times a year. So we're very excited about how that, those results are going to help teachers truly zero in on student by student, skill by skill, to be able to remediate the, the, the skills that our kids are not being as successful on. So that way, they're, when they do come to take the state assessment, they're going to have seen it in some cases up to nine times, you know? And so certainly six times before they take the assessment. So we're very excited about what the results are going to be for that. And we had a whole series of FOIA requests from our last meeting, and I have all that information in the packet. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Obleski. Principal's Report, Mrs. Cushing.
Good evening. I had lots of things in my report. It felt like it was a little extra long this, this month, but I won't go over each one of those. I'm going to highlight our SMART goals that we're keeping track of, so tentatively there, or so attentively there. Our first goal about graduation rate, we take a look at our grades or number to monitor the progress on that. Our students are doing great. Out of 6,804 course grades right now, 94.62 of those have passing grades. So that, I think that's really a great start to the school year. To give a little bit more breakdown on the failure piece, we have 366 of those that are failing grades, which is comprised of 202 students. So we have a lot of different interventions in place that we're working on to try to target those kids and get them moving in the right direction, as well as some programs for the teachers to help use there. Our attendance goal, pretty impressive. We have, at the time of the report anyways, we have 52% of our students that had perfect attendance. So that's really impressive for this point of the school year. And right now, we would determine that we have about 80% that are on track with where they need to be for the school year. Our third SMART goal talks about the SA, or excuse me, the ACT. And I just love that SAT, I keep going back to it. Dr. Obleski already mentioned that a little bit. So I'll just share with you that I challenge the entire student body to raise their scores by two points. If they can raise their score by two points, then we're going to put them in a drawing and give away quite a few prizes. and give away quite a few prizes to the students as a way to, you know, incentivize them. They're enjoying things like free parking and the teacher's lot, a few of those types of things. As far as the changes that I want to highlight out of the report, we have changed our structure slightly with our pre-huddle and huddle. You may hear about that when you're out in the community, and we took the feedback from students and staff on that. We're kind of varying occasionally from month to month and huddle to huddle what time of day is happening to make it a little bit more effective. And we're also lessening the numbers, so have a little more impact and action-packed huddles on the days that we are having those. And so far, that's gone really great. The other piece I want to highlight that was a change is something in our assessments. We're continuing all the same assessments we've given over the last several years. However, we will be having our eighth graders attend school, or attend school, I guess I would say, with us for three days during the first week of October. This change is to try to help increase the number of students. It has just slowly dwindled and dwindled. We offered that test on a Saturday, and the turnout was just getting worse and worse. We have about 50%. So we're going to try this and hope for closer to 100% of our students that we can have data on. And with that, the rest of my items were just some updates about other things that we have going on this year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cushing. Athletic Director Report, Mr. Hans is not here. His report's in your packet. Director of Area Career Center, Dr. Lang.
How's everybody doing tonight? Get to report on some fun stuff tonight. So about 120 students from welding, CAD, building trades, machining, electricity, got to visit a couple of the apprenticeship training centers for the labor union. So they went to the IBW in Joliet, and then in Mokena, they have the Pipe Fitters Union. So they went to both of those a couple of weeks ago. It was on the 12th. And they got to experience what's going on there and really see what it means to start one of those apprenticeship programs. We usually have several students every year that participate in one of those once they graduate, so it's really good to get them out there ahead of things. The culinary program, they're trying to do some fun stuff along with the catering and the different things that they do with recipes and all that kind of stuff. So they've been inviting some of the classes from LP to come over, and if they're doing research on their Chromebooks or anything like that, the teachers will come over there. And then they're doing ice shaving, so they're doing snow cones, that sort of thing. And then just yesterday, they started doing dirty sodas. I'm not exactly sure. They put vanilla and cream and those kinds of things in there. So it's been a hit. The students love it, and it gives them an opportunity to do their research and stuff in a different setting. So it's kind of a fun thing. Since you guys were over for the building and grounds meeting over there, we have doors on the lower level restroom, so now they're operational and people can use them. The caution tape is no longer there. Everybody's pretty excited to have a couple extra functioning restrooms over there. The manufacturing expo that happens annually over at IBCC and some of our local manufacturing facilities, that's going to take place on October 21st. And they're looking for more students this year. So I think last year, there was 175 students that participated from the region, and I believe LP was somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 students that went. So we're going to increase that to 40. And I think that number is going to be even higher because we're going to take some students from the Career Center, and LP students will be involved in that. So normally, I believe it's the number of students that go from LP. So I think there's going to be a total of like 90 from the area that go there. And yesterday, the counselors and principals from this rafty region visited the Dolan Building, and we had a meeting to talk about ISBE and Papillion endorsements and that sort of thing. And then we gave them a tour across the campus and got them familiar with what we've got going on there. So any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Lang.
Thank you.
Director of Communications, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. A few quick updates today. One, if you didn't see it in with the materials, we kind of brought back the Cavill letter as a digital publication this year, so we got the first one out. Hoping to do that maybe two to three times a semester as a way to kind of highlight some stuff and maybe kind of go a little bit more in depth. In particular, as we talk about making sure that not only our faculty and students are aware and focused on our SMART goals, but that our parents and potentially even community members are too. So we're trying that out as a way to keep pushing that element out as best as we can. Also, as one of the exciting things, we talked about in the past of starting this new student assistant program, ideas that came in from the students of like, oh, our parents always complain because they want to know prom dates three months in advance, not two, three weeks. So we, in the back of that, you'll see we have basically a full year laid out of all the major events and things like that. So hopefully, even more improvements for our overall communication program. Excuse me. Always, I imagine everyone knows that homecoming's coming up, so we're busy getting ready materials for all of that stuff and helping student council and everyone else get ready for variety shows and pep rallies and all those things that we have going on in the gym next week. And then, as Mr. Sarver said, the big news out of the foundation was that the family of Linda Hildebrand presented us on Thursday with a very large generous donation, which will go to really help some great things. Also, really nice piece, because this fall, we're going to be taking off from the annual chicken dinner, so you're not worried about buying any dinner tickets, at least from us.
No chicken dinner?
I know.
So depressed.
I know. A lot of the restaurants that we normally fall back on are all kind of in flux on whether or not they're going to be open. So the decision was made to maybe hold off this year. The nice part, I guess, as we discussed, we'll make more on interest from that donation than we will on selling tickets. So some of us at least are pretty excited.
Much less work.
Yeah. So yeah, but yeah, really good things happening there, and then as we look to the next year. And then we have some good progress happening with that grant later position two, which I'm sure you'll hear more updates from Dr. Obleski soon. That's all, unless you have any questions.
Right.
All right, thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, under new business, 10.1, any motion of approval to adopt La Salle-Pretence High School Fiscal Year 2026 Budget.
So moved.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.2, any motion of approval to adopt La Salle-Prou area career center fiscal year 2026 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.3, any motion of approval to adopt the 2025-2026 ACC Joint Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.4, any motion of approval for the Health, Life, Safety Main Building Amendment, number 90, Howard Fellow Stadium Light Replacement Project for $390,000.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.5, any motion of approval to authorize superintendent to apply for the ISBE fiscal year 2026 school maintenance grant application in support of Howard Fellow Stadium Light Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.6, any motion of approval for the track replacement project building permit.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.7, any motion of approval for the track replacement project change order number one, color exchange, colored exchange zones for $16,000.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.8, any motion of approval to authorize superintendent to let bids for the agriculture building.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.9, any motion of approval for the fiscal year 2025 salary compensation report.
So moved.
I don't know.
I didn't hear the other one. Was that you?
That was me.
I had one.
Oh, I said second. Yeah, I'll second.
Second? Okay, sorry. Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.10, any motion of approval for the fiscal year 2025 IMRF compensation report.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.11, any motion of approval for the press policy issue 119, June 2025, second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. An emotional approval to modify the following policies to include saliva samples as a means to test students in the district's random drug testing program. A, Policy 7.24 Conduct Code for Participants in Extracurricular Activities. B, Policy 7.240 AP2 Administrative Procedures. And C, Policy 7.240 AP2-E1 Consent to Participate in Extracurricular Drug and Alcohol Testing Program. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
10.13, any motion of approval for the following retirements with regret. Mrs. Lysus Lander, teacher, at the conclusion of the 2029-2030 school year. Mr. Kevin Keating, teacher, at the conclusion of the 2030-2031 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.14, any motion for the following resignations. Mr. Connor Soquenson, Title I Math Paraprofessional, effective on September 26, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Pasetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.15, any emotional approval for the following appointments as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?